The September sixteenth, City County Planning Commission to our meeting tonight. Ms. Ramsey, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Drane? I'm sorry, I've been calling you all Ms. Commissioners, I apologize. Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Monica. The minutes of our last meeting of August nineteenth were in your packet. You've had time to read them. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
Motion to approve with the correction that we were given tonight.
Thank you. Monica?
Sir, Ms. Clark?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Clark, I apologize. I'll stop doing that. Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale? Commissioner Volkert? Commissioner Balance?
Captain.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Captain.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Monica.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moore?
Chair Warren, I request that you order that the Warren County zoning ordinance subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan with all of its elements effective as of this date be introduced as exhibits for each of tonight's hearings. I further request that you order that the staff reports, all attachments together with the commission's file for each application be introduced as exhibits. Finally, I ask that Ben Peterson, Rachel Hurt, and Zach Jones be sworn as witnesses before you and that their oath be reflected in the record for each hearing.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. We have Monica or is Mr. Thornberry here for our audit report?
He is not here, but I can give you, I think I have a good report.
Let's do that. Thank you. See, I said me and I hope, or did I say Monica? I'm sorry.
That's okay. Guys, normally our auditor would give this presentation, but he is not here tonight for some reason. So I'm gonna very quickly just go through the high points of the audit with you. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to stop me. You'll notice on the first page is the auditor's report. Just to kind of give you guys a history, the auditors were at our office the middle of July. They were, I can't remember the exact dates, but they spent Thursday in the office and then Friday they spent at their office reviewing the data that they had collected. We did receive a clean audit for this fiscal year. I know he always gives you guys a reminder that we operate on a cash basis. And if we skip on over to page three, that shows our balance sheet, our beginning balance, and then our, of the four thirty-one, one seventy-five, our restricted cash, which those are surety bonds that we hold in for construction. The total there equals two point four-three, or two point three-four million dollars. And we also, as you see, had, those were our statement balances as well, so everything balances. If we flip over to page four, this is gonna look very similar to the budget that we review with you guys every, every year, the beginning and the end. It's gonna show our revenues, what we received in from the city, what we received in from the county, our NPO funds, sales, interest income, and other four cities contributions. That amount added up to one point four-nine million dollars. And then we jump down to expenditures, salaries, wages, retirement, the list goes on. But again, these are all our normal budget items. He has just compiled them here. And then you'll notice at the very bottom in bold, our total expenditures is the one point seven-five million dollars. The variance there between our revenues and our expenditures is fifteen thousand dollars, which puts us at the net position at the end of the year at fifteen thousand higher than what we were at the beginning of the year. We'll flip on over to page five and six. Again, they always report, our basis of accounting is cash, paid time off, used sick, other compensated absences. Those do not show on our budget because they do not have a cash value. Grants, we did not receive any grants, so that's an easy one. Equipment and capital investments, another easy one. We only spent about eleven thousand dollars in capital expenses last year for computers. Let's see. Flip over to page six and in note four, they always review our credit risk. So what that basically means is we have, are we FDIC insured? The banks have up to two hundred and fifty thousand. But then our, our bank, which is Independence Bank, also does a guarantee and through their trust department. So we had, have a pledge amount. And so at the end of each month, we get an email from them saying that they have a certain amount of collateral that covers our account so that we are insured. And so you'll see that noted in number four. And I forwarded all of that over to auditors as well. I think that's kind of it in a nutshell. We'll go on to page eight and nine. And that just shows our budget to actual comparison. Our original budget is in the first column. We did not do a budget amendment for last fiscal year, so the amended budget will, those numbers are identical. And then it's gonna show what we actually spent and then our variance. So that'll show any variances that we have. And that's pretty much it. On the fly, that's all I've got for you guys. Any questions?
Thank you, Megan. Any questions for Megan? Thank you for all you do. And this would call for a motion to...
Yes, we do need a motion to approve.
A motion to approve our audit report from Hensley and Thornberry.
On behalf of the Budget Committee, we make a motion to approve the 2021 audit as presented this evening. And want to thank the staff for all the hard work they've done. This COVID has definitely been an experience, and we are very proud to say that they've done a good job and the audit has proved it.
Second.
Monica, would you call the roll, please?
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Me.
Ms. Unseld? Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. So moved. Thank you. You have the subdivision in site development plans commissioners in your packet that was mailed. Are there any questions? Hearing none, they will be submitted as, as, as mailed. Letters and credit, letters of credit and performance bonds were also in your packets. We see three credit and performance bonds that have been either upgraded or downgraded. So we need a motion for that, right? Yes, we have a motion to...
Still moved.
Second.
Mr. Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert? Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. There is no old business for tonight. We will enter our first public hearing, and we appreciate everybody that's here tonight. You see up on the, on the board. This, how we, how this is be presented, the staff will make a presentation. The applicants will make a presentation and for fifteen minutes or up to fifteen minutes. If the opposition, if there is opposition to this request, if you have a spokesperson, that person would have fifteen minutes. If not, then there is space for individual public comments to a limit of three minutes. And we would ask that once somebody has made a, if there's an opposition to this, that we don't repeat the same things. Does that, do you understand that? So we appreciate that. And then each, the applicants and the opposition will have three minutes. So Zach, our first hearing tonight is 2021 Flume. Leon Tartar has filed an application for a future land use map amendment on tracts of land containing approximately two hundred and sixty-three acres located zero Nashville Road and zero South McLean Road located approximately point, one point four miles from any Glasscock Road and approximately point, a quarter of a mile from intersection of Nashville Road and South McLean Road from agriculture and low-density residential to low-density residential. All twelve commissioners will be voting on this. And if this is approved, then we will move to item number two, which is a general development plan and some changes. So Zach?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-up on April twenty-first for the property. You see outlined in yellow on your screen, the zoning is agriculture and floodplain, ag and F. The existing land use is agricultural and the future land use is agriculture and low-density, as Chair Warren stated earlier. The applicants are proposing to amend the flume for two hundred and sixty-three point three-five acres located zero Nashville Road and zero South McIlwain from ag and low-density residential to low-density residential. If the flume amendment is successful, the applicants would like to re-zone the same properties from agriculture to RS1A single-family residential to subdivide a maximum of five hundred and thirty-two single-family residential lots. Because the current future land use category is not compatible, this will require the flume amendment the Chair Warren mentioned a moment ago. And we can flip on to the second page. You'll see the category descriptions for the future land use map categories. And then down at LU one point one point four, the comprehensive plan outlines the procedures for amending the flume. And it's got your three criteria there below, which I can read if you guys like. But the applicants included the following information with their application to address the criteria listed above in those bullets. The proposed use is clearly compatible with the existing surrounding development, which provides for single-family use, multifamily use, and some commercial uses. Given the design restrictions, minimum square footage and lot sizes, the development compares, will with newly developed residential subdivisions in the area. Given the need for single-family residences in Warren County, the development will provide an overriding public benefit. The planning commission to determine if the narrative listed above coupled with the proposed DPCs for the zone change address the review criteria outlined in LU one point one point four. Under the site characteristics review, I will highlight anything you guys want, but specifically under transportation infrastructure, that the properties have frontage on Nashville Road and South McIlwain. Like I mentioned a moment ago, South McIlwain has a current pavement width of sixteen feet. And if approved, South McIlwain will have to be widened to twenty feet from the southernmost entrance, entrance to the development on South McIlwain to the intersection thirty-one W. And I'll touch on that more in a minute, too. On the third page at the top, under natural features, I will highlight that there is a mature tree line that runs along the southern property line. Sinkholes are known to exist in the vicinity and that Cheney Lake State Nature Preserve is located to the south of the property. And then I will mention that the application does comply with the majority of the items in the site characters, site characteristic review with exceptions noted regarding that current road width for South McIlwain. Under site design compatibility, I'll flip over to the attached density map on your screen there. The existing and approved densities for subdivisions in the surrounding area range from zero point zero-nine dwelling units per acre to ten point zero-four dwelling units per acre. And the density proposed for the development tonight is two point zero-two dwelling units per acre. Skipping on down to surrounding architectural features, the DPCs for the three most recent zone changes in the area require minimum home sizes of thirteen hundred square feet for the JNP Balance Farm, thirteen hundred square feet for the Tartar property, and eighteen hundred square feet for Stewart Farm. Minimum two-car garage is required for the JNP Balance Farm and Stewart Farm. And the Tartar property requires a minimum one-car garage for twin homes and two-car garage for detached single-family residences. Under building material review, DPCs for the Tartar property and Stewart Farm require eighty-five percent brick, stone, drive-it, cement, base siding, wood siding, man-made, stone, or other modern masonry material with vinyl and soffits and underneath porches. DPCs for the JNP Balance Farm require that exteriors be constructed of brick, stone, drive-it, cement, siding, man-made, stone, vinyl, hardy, or other similar modern masonry materials, and LP smart siding. And that brick, stone, or man-made stone shall extend to grade for residences constructed in the development. That no less than forty percent of the residents shall have seventy percent exterior consisting of that brick, stone, drive-it, cement, siding, man-made, stone, hardy, other masonry materials or LP smart siding. And that no residence shall be constructed with less than thirty percent facades of those same materials. Under building orientation, homes should be oriented to face the public streets. Rear and side-facing facades along Nashville Road and South McIlwain should be buffered and screened. The applicants addressed the screening of side or rear-facing facades along thirty-one W and DPC nine, but they did not include any screening or buffering requirements for side or rear-facing facades along South McIlwain Road. And then under landscaping and screening, it echoes some of that. And then that in DPC number ten, that the developer shall take all reasonable steps to preserve all mature and healthy trees along the southern property line adjoining Cheney Lake. Under proposed open space, that there is no open space proposed within the development outside of the minimum fifty percent required in the RS1A zone, but they did agree to provide sidewalks on both sides of internal streets and provide pedestrian connectivity between development sidewalk and the proposed Buchanan Park shared use path. And then flipping on to the next page, some of those same things are echoed there in the pedestrian bicycler transit facilities. And that there is, I will mention a shared use path planned to go out on the east side of Nashville Road, running up along the side of Buchanan Park. And the application complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design. Moving on down to the traffic impact study, you've got your criteria outlined in three point, one point four of the zoning ordinance for a traffic impact study. The applicants consulted with KYTC and Warren County Public Works, and they neither required a traffic impact study in lieu of commitment from the applicants that the following transportation improvements are implemented if the proposed development is approved. Number one, that South McIlwain Road shall be widened to a minimum of twenty feet from US thirty-one W Nashville Road to the last entrance into the subdivision. That's Warren County Public Works. A dedicated left turn lane shall be installed on South McIlwain at the intersection with US thirty-one W Nashville Road, also from Public Works. A right turn lane onto Nashville Road into the development is required. That's from KYTC. And a signal warrant analysis is required. And if warranted, the developer shall construct such signal on US thirty-one W Nashville Road. The applicants have committed to all of the above reference improvements requested by the transportation agencies and their DPCs, which we will get to right here on your next page. And we'll start with number one. All new utility lines shall be located underground. Number two, there shall be uniformed street lighting. The development shall have sidewalks on each side of any internal street. Developer shall cause pedestrian connectivity between the development sidewalks and the proposed Buchanan Park shared use path. The developer is not responsible for traversing or otherwise providing crossing across thirty-one W. Number three, outdoor parking of trailers, campers, boats, and recreational vehicles will be prohibited. All trash recycling receptacles shall be kept hidden from street view with the exception of collection days. Number four, there shall be a maximum of five hundred and thirty-two single-family residential lots, and all lots shall be served via internal streets. Number five, each residence shall be constructed of brick, stone, hardy board, or other modern masonry materials. Vinyl siding shall be used for soffits only. Foundations shall be made of brick or stone, and no exposed plain face or split-face block shall be allowed for foundations. Each residence will have a minimum of eighteen hundred square feet heated and cooled living space, and shall have a minimum two-car attached garage. Number six, all driveways shall be constructed of concrete. Number seven, all lot owners within the property shall be required to join and participate financially in a HOA homeowners association. Number eight, the development shall have no more than one access point upon US thirty-one W Nashville Road. The developers shall construct a right turn lane onto US thirty-one W into the development. And they shall install, install a traffic control light at intersection of thirty-one W and entrance of the development should a signal warrant analysis indicate the necessity. For one, the developer shall widen South McIlwain to a minimum of twenty feet from US thirty-one W to the furthest entrance into the development, and shall install a dedicated left turn lane from South McIlwain onto thirty-one W. Number nine, any lots abutting US thirty-one W shall screen from US thirty-one W the back facades of same utilizing a landscape buffer of not less than ten feet in width consisting of a minimum of six evergreen trees and three deciduous per linear one hundred feet. Number ten, the developer shall take all response, excuse me, reasonable steps to preserve all mature and healthy trees along the southern property line adjoining Cheney Lake. Eleven, should any sinkholes be discovered within the proposed development, such sinkholes shall be repaired to an engineered standard approved by Warren County Public Works prior to construction above said sinkhole. Number twelve, the developer shall consult with the Woodburn Volunteer Fire Department regarding the location and spacing of fire hydrants. And number thirteen, that development plan conditions three, five, and six shall remain development plan conditions until such time as a plat is filed, with the filing of a plat development plan conditions shall become plat restrictions. With that, the proposed general development plan meets a majority of the review criteria for site design compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. And flipping on to the next page, we'll take a look at the focus 2030 category review. The staff has identified nineteen items in that, eight of which comply and eleven of which are up to your determination. At the top there, the proposal may comply with the flume and with LU one point one point one and one point one point two if deemed compatible with the surrounding area. And if the flume amendment to low-density residential is approved, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible and if it complies with LU one point one point three. The proposal may comply with LU two and LU two point one if the planning commission determines that the proposed development incorporates design standards resulting in high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. The planning commission should determine compliance with LU two point one point one. There is no open space proposed within the development outside of that minimum fifty percent that I mentioned a moment ago, as required in the RS1A zone. But they did agree to provide sidewalks on both sides of internal streets and provide that pedestrian connectivity between the development sidewalks and the proposed Buchanan Park shared use path. And that latter portion satisfies compliance with, general compliance with PR one point seven and PR three. The proposal complies with LU two point three point one and TR two point one, as the development will be served by internal streets. And transportation-related improvements will also be constructed by the developer as requested by and in coordination with the applicable transportation agencies. And applicants did provide a substrate, as you can see on the, the concept there, connection as required by the subregs along the southern property line to that ten-acre track, or ten-plus acre track to the south. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development, including the lack of buffering and screening of side and rear-facing facades along South McIlwain protects Rich Pond's rural character, and that the proposed development is compatible with the area and if it complies with LU two point nine. The application generally complies with LU two point one point four, PR one point seven, and NCR one point one point six, as the applicants agree to take all reasonable steps to preserve all mature and healthy trees along the southern property line adjoining Cheney Lake. The proposal complies with NCR one point one and one point three. As applicants included considerations for sinkholes in DPC number eleven, the planning commission should determine compliance with NCR two point four and two point four point one. And if upgrades to the existing roadway infrastructure and an extension of the existing sewer line will be required to accommodate the proposed development. And if the planning commission should determine if the proposed development will result in premature pressure on the countryside, and if it will preserve and enhance the existing agricultural landscape and scenic rural character along Nashville Road and South McIlwain. And lastly, the proposal may comply with HM two point one and HM four if the planning commission determines that the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type, and that the proposed residences are believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. I won't go through the staff summary, as we've touched on most of those items, and I'm about to hit a couple more with the points to consider, as you can flip back to that on page one. The planning commission should consider if the argument provided by the applicants to amend the flume meets the criteria outlined in LU one point one point four of the comprehensive plan. If the flume amendment is approved, the proposal would be consistent with the flume and low-density residential category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, with exceptions regarding the current road width for South McIlwain Road. And again, they, they did agree to widen that if this application is approved. The proposed general development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design, with exceptions regarding the buffering and screening of side and rear-facing facades along South McIlwain and compatibility of the proposed... facades along South McIlwain, and compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. That's all I've got for the staff report, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Zach.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any questions for this flume amendment to Zach?
Question, on the future existing zoning and future land use, it shows floodplain. But on the future land used here, it shows agriculture. You're not changing the floodplain to agriculture, are you?
No, ma'am. It's, it's not a mistake. You're talking about the existing zoning.
Yes, in the flume.
In the flume.
Mm-hmm. It's all floodplain here.
Okay.
But on here, it's all agriculture.
Yes, ma'am. That portion of the floodplain, I do believe, is remaining with the floodplain, and there's no development that's going to be going on in the floodplain portion.
Can that possibly flood this new area?
The engineers will be responsible for designing, controlling their own water on the site, but I'll let them speak to that more.
Zach, I'm looking at these two pages. There appears to be something that traverses the development, and it's a little bit small, and I can't read it. I can't tell if that's a right-of-way or what, and I'll let, Rachel, can you see what I'm pointing to there?
Yes, it looks like it says an overhead line and another one that says lot line to be abandoned by future plat.
Got it. Okay, so they're going to relocate that and get rid of that. All right, very good. Thank you.
I've got another question. In the beginning of it, you said it was five hundred and thirty-two lots?
Yes, ma'am.
But on the plan that we're showing, it says five hundred and twelve lots. Is it five hundred and twelve or five hundred and thirty-two?
We got a couple different concepts from the applicant, and I'll let them touch on that. This one has five hundred and twelve, another one that we saw, I think, had a slight alteration to the, I don't know what you call that, the circular-type shape towards the southwest of the concept. And I think with the alternate configuration, it was closer to that five hundred and thirty-two. But I'll let them answer that a little bit more clearly.
Thank you.
This may be a question for the applicant, but regarding the Cheney Lake State Nature Preserve and the cave, do you know if the applicant has had any discussion with any representatives from that particular entity?
I do not, and that would be a good question for the applicants.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stark. Any other questions for Zach? Thank you very much, Zach. Good job. Is the applicant here, or their representative, please?
Chairman Warren.
What's your name?
Chris Davenport.
Address?
Nine twenty-one College Street.
Swear to tell the truth.
Swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Commissioners, good evening. I'm here on behalf of Leon Tartar. Mr. Leon Tartar couldn't be with us tonight. His son David is here with us. Just for your edification, I provided staff a limited power of attorney for tonight's purposes, so if we have anything comes up, development plan condition-wise, David has been given the authority from his father to deal with that tonight. In fact, when I get finished giving our conversation of this afternoon, I will go ahead and revise one of these, and he'll need to come up and agree to that, but I'll save that for just a minute. As always, thank you, Zach, for presenting the application. He pretty much, as the staff always does, said everything I was going to say, but a few highlights I want to mention. And I'll start with the issue, Commissioner Clark, about the number of lots. So what I want to stress is, the density that the staff has calculated at two point oh two units an acre is based upon the five thirty-two, or five thirty-five, not the five twelve you see in your concept. That's the first thing I want to make sure you all understand, is that the density would not be able to go beyond two point oh two. The reason there's a discrepancy, as you all see, and it's usually on these bigger developments, that there can be various concepts along the way. Sometimes you add, you ask for a few more lots than your engineering is initially showing. Usually what happens, it builds out at even less than what you initially show. So we're not sure exactly how many RS one A lots we can get on the acreage, but we feel confident it could not be more than five thirty-five. That's why we've asked for five thirty-five. Which brings me to my first point. This is a RS, if the flume is amended, and we get the zoning that we're requesting, my client intends to build an RS one A subdivision. So you all know there are four classifications of single-family subdivisions, RS one D being the most dense, being the highest intensity. This is RS one A. This would be the least-dense subdivision that the zoning ordinance anticipates, and I think that's a critical point. One thing Zach told you, one of your considerations tonight is whether this application would, as the ordinance says, increase the array of housing opportunities or types in the area. So I could take the commission back literally. If we just go back probably no more than two years, we have seen, and Zach touched upon these developments, we've seen the Stewart Farm development across the street. We've seen another development across the street, which I'll call Tartar. It's not this one, but the Tartar family rezoned that property as well. It's some acreage that sits adjacent to the high school property. We've seen the Balance subdivision. That's the most recent one. The Balance subdivision is across the street as well. That was rezoned in May. And in fact, all these may have been within the last year, certainly within the last two years. Those developments, and I'll even throw another one in, you may recall the Skis Road development, which is off of Skis Road but would back up into Stewart Farms and back up, I think, to the other Tartar property. Those developments have a wide array of housing types. They have some zero lot-line twin homes in them. There are multifamily housing in the Stewart Farms, and then there are the more dense single-family. There's some RS one C, I believe, and even some RS one D. So the first point I would make tonight is, this development certainly increases the array. Typically, I'm here saying that a more dense development increases the housing opportunities as opposed to the already-existing less dense. Sometimes I'm arguing that the multifamily is new to the area, and that's why we should pass that, because it's increasing the types available. This is actually the converse. This development that is being requested is a larger home size, is a larger lot size, is a less-dense development than what has been approved in the last few years. It's actually the type of development, when I've been here on some of these other applications, Stewart Farms I presented to you all, the Skis Road I presented, and most recently the Balance property I presented, at those hearings, what some of the neighborhood said was, we want bigger homes. In fact, in the Balance property, the presentation was, we wanted, they wanted eighteen hundred square-foot homes. Mr. Tartar actually heard all that, and in response, Mr. Tartar has brought an application for RS one A homes, eighteen hundred square foot, that's, this is going to sound confusing, that is the highest minimum square foot of all the developments that have been requested out there in the last three or four years. It's all brick. What you have before you would be a subdivision that's a hundred percent brick, hardy, or stone. Vinyl would be allowed only in soffits. If you compare that to the other subdivisions we've talked about, I made a little cheat sheet this afternoon. Stewart Farms has an eighty-five percent brick component. The previous Tartar property has an eighty-five percent brick component, and then the Balance development is a little bit more complicated. It says they have to have forty percent of their homes have to be comprised of seventy percent brick, which means in the Balance development, you can have all vinyl homes. The reason I compare that, and then lastly, when we talk about density, the Stewart is at five point six units an acre. The previous Tartar development is at ten point oh four units an acre. The Balance development's three point oh seven units an acre. Mr. Tartar's application tonight is two point oh two units an acre. I'll just reiterate, what Mr. Tartar has tried to bring is what oftentimes the response to these other developments was. Bigger lots, bigger home, brick, brick-and-stone foundation, no-block foundation, concrete driveways, double sidewalks, all those amenities that these DPCs allow for and demand, not just allow for, they require. That's basically what I wanted to highlight tonight to you all in my presentation. The other thing I'll say is, we always talk about traffic. Mr. Tartar agreed to all the improvements that was requested of him. That includes turn lanes on thirty-one W and South McIlwain. That includes a traffic light on thirty-one W if the light signal analysis warrants that, and the widening of South McIlwain to twenty feet. Lastly, one of the last things Zach talked about was your policies. You have eight definite yeses. You have no definite no's. To me, that's always the critical thing when I get these staff reports. You've got the twelve, I'll call them toss-ups, that you all really always have. You know, there's always going to be some of these items that are left to your discretion, and that's certainly the case here, but you have no definite no's. Now with that, I'll take you to the one amendment I would like to offer tonight, as I wrap up, Commissioner Warren, if I may, Chair, and that is, in number, number nine, I think, number nine. So in number nine, there is, basically, this DPC requires some buffering. And after Mr. Tartar spoke to some of the neighbors, including the Cheney family, he wants to strengthen this a little bit. Okay, we're going to add some buffering. And part of this, actually Zach mentioned in the staff report, he mentioned it to me throughout this process, and that is buffering South McIlwain, and we are in a position tonight to agree to do that. So what I would offer here in this DPC will read as follows, and I wrote this down verbatim, so I think I'll have this handy. And also, we actually, we needed to revise this anyways, because as of right now, it only screens the back facades, but I think we agreed to the back and side facades. So the way this would read is follows. Any lots abutting US thirty-one W and/or South McIlwain shall screen from US thirty-one W and/or South McIlwain. The back and/or side facades of same utilizing a landscape buffer of no less than ten feet in width, consisting of a minimum of six evergreen trees and three deciduous trees per hundred linear feet. And then a whole new sentence. Developers shall install a six-inch stave woven wire fence topped with barbed wire along the property line common with Cheney, as well as a landscape buffer of no less than ten feet in width, consisting of a minimum of six evergreen trees and three deciduous trees per one hundred linear feet. And I'll show you where that property line would be. Do we have a, the pointer? So that last sentence of the woven wire fence and the additional screening would be right here, this being the existing Cheney property. We don't often have woven wire fences with barbed wire on top of them, but that's really because of the agricultural use here. I talked with Mr. Tartar, I think, and I want to speak for the Cheney family, but I think the existing fence there is like an electrified fence. So we're going to beef up their current, I guess you'd call it livestock fence, along that line, and then on the interior on our property, we'll install that ten-foot landscape buffer with the six evergreens and three deciduous trees. So with that, I guess I need to make sure that I do, I don't want to overlook the flume. This property is currently flumed ag and low-density. Part of it is low-density residential. We're asking that the entirety go to low-density residential and then zone into the RS one A. Again, the least intense, biggest lot size, biggest setback required, single-family lots that we have in the zoning ordinance. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Any questions for Mr. Davenport regarding this flume amendment?
Chris, a couple questions, if I may. So the first question is, do I understand correctly that your client, you and/or your client have met with the neighbors, and that's where this, that was the result of this fence that they requested?
With the Cheney family.
With the Cheney family.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, the specifications from that fence came from the Cheneys?
I didn't ask David that. I hope they're happy with it, but that's what we're offering, so I guess we'll see if that's the type of-
Pretty specific there, and that's why I was asking that question. And as you stated, that is a unique fence, so if that came from the Cheneys and that's a concession that you guys made, then I'm happy with that. Let's go back to the five thirty-five, if we could, just for a moment. So you said that sometimes you present the five thirty-five, but you might end up with something else. Can you give us a couple of scenarios that would, that would result in a smaller number of lots? Are you referring to things like retention basins may be larger?
Correct.
Engineering may dictate. So explain to us why you would ask for more but end up with less to get there.
It's really, it starts off as an engineering math problem that becomes a legal problem whenever I'm standing here. So the engineers, they start off, RS one A lots have minimum lot sizes. They can't be smaller than a certain size. On top of that, you have minimum setbacks, so those requirements have to be met. So typically, what happens, the engineers look at the property, they think of how it can be laid out, and how many lots you can get, given those variables. Then you get into where we're going to put the streets. So they put the streets in, in this concept, the way they're drawn, assuming the streets can go that way. Now, once they start actually doing the groundwork and further engineering, when they find sinkholes that have to be mitigated, drainage that has to be required, where that has to go, they found out how big those drainage areas have to be, that's what starts to take your land away, for lack of a better term.
So would it be, would it be accurate to state, Chris, at this point, this concept is laid out without regard to engineering? There's been no engineering done at this point, and so, once that engineering is done, it will start to dictate new constraints on the layout of the lots.
I think that's a fair statement. Now you'll see on here, there is a planned or a potential drainage area, and that's just because if they, when the engineers look at the topography of the land-
They know they're going to have to have some.
Going to have to have some, and at least from the thirty thousand, you know, foot viewpoint, that's likely where they think it's going to end up. But certainly, that area could be smaller if the retention demands it.
And the last point I want to, or the last thing I want to ask you about, so if I read DPC number five correctly, all of the homes will be brick, or hardy, or other modern masonry materials, stone, et cetera, no vinyl, correct?
Correct. Vinyl and soffits only.
And then eighteen hundred square feet of heated space and a two-car attached garage, correct?
You know, I forgot to mention that, Commissioner Graham. When you compare those other developments, there are some that require one. I think the Tartar family, the other property across the street, has some twin homes with one-car garages. I think the Skis Road development has some one-car garage twin homes. All of these are two-car garage homes.
You're committing to two-car garages attached.
Correct.
Okay. All right, very good. That's all I have.
Chris, is it, and it's, I mean, by my calculations, it's fair to say, these lot widths on these lots are all a hundred-plus?
I think Rachel could tell us the minimum.
Eighty-five is the minimum. Okay.
Chris, I don't see on here where that cemetery that's on this property is addressed.
Well, we thought, we initially, Commissioner Clark gave the staff a DPC that talked about that, and then when they answered back, I think they found out the cemetery's not on this property.
It's not. Okay. That's a mistake, then. Okay.
Chris, I do commend you on answering a lot of the questions. Chris, I do commend you on answering a lot of the questions that we ask each, at each meeting, and going ahead and addressing the things with the orientation and everything. I think that's good.
The staff helps with that. So I mean, when we initially give an application, they write us back and they have a checklist of things usually they want us to address if we haven't. We try.
They'll show up sometimes without them.
Sometimes. That's why Ben, his hairline resembles mine, that's why.
Point of clarification, trying to help, your current DPC number four says there shall be a maximum 532 single-family residential lots.
Five thirty, I know I said 535. I meant to say 532.
So we're good?
Yeah.
Chris, could you address the Cheney Lake State Nature Preserve? What do we know about that?
That's to the southern property line, Commissioner Starks, and you know, that's the property line where they've committed to maintain that tree line. So if I recall, I think that was something the staff pointed out early on.
Okay, so neither the cave nor the preserve has any kind of historical significance of any kind?
I mean, I don't want, I might have, I don't, not that no one's pointed out, let's put it that way.
Okay, thank you.
So Chris, to expand on that, let's assume that in engineering, you discover something regarding the lake, then you would, your client would be required to address that, correct?
You can't build over caves.
Got it.
And you know, just like the concern about the floodplain, you can't, those present engineering problems. If you can't engineer around, then you have to lay out your development to address them somehow.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Davenport?
I think it would be proper for me to get Mr. Tarter to swear to that revised DPC.
Yes, I'd be, thank you.
David, can you come over, please? He's going to swear, yeah.
Tarter, your name?
David Tarter.
Address?
504 US 31W.
Swear to tell the truth?
David, did you hear the revised development plan condition number nine that I read?
Yes, sir, I did.
That included the buffer along South McIlwain for rear face, the rear and side facades?
Correct.
And then also the property common with Cheney?
Correct, yes.
Do you agree to do that?
I do.
Okay. And you're here on behalf of your father today with the power of attorney, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Davenport, would you mind to read that to us again, exactly what you're stating in number nine?
Any lots abutting US 31W and/or South McIlwain shall screen from US 31W and/or South McIlwain. The back and/or side facades of same utilizing a landscape buffer of no less than 10 feet in width consisting of a minimum of six evergreen trees and three deciduous trees per 100 linear feet. Developers shall install a six-inch stave woven wire fence topped with barbed wire along the property line common with Cheney as well as a landscape buffer of no less than 10 feet in width consisting of a minimum of six evergreen trees and three deciduous trees per 100 linear feet. The long story, I guess the way I would summarize that, Commissioner Clark, in a way that sounds like English, is the lots here on this concept, this is 31W, you can see that we've got in concept a cul-de-sac here. And you know, this is really common in our subdivisions now that are served through internal streets. You're going to wind up with probably one, two, three, four lots here that either have back facades, in the case of these lots, or a side facade in the case of this lot. And if you look along South McIlwain, which is right here, you've got, by my count, probably 17 lots on this concept that have either a back, mainly back facades, but maybe a side facade right here that are facing that street. So as you look from these streets, if you're looking at the homes, you're not going to see the fronts of them, you're going to see the sides or the rears of them. So what staff has requested and Mr. Tarter has agreed to is, along these two streets, on these lots that we've discussed, there'll be a 10-foot landscape buffer installed with a minimum of basically nine trees per 100 feet, six evergreens, and three deciduous to help shield visually the back or side facades. In addition to that, we're going to build that same type of buffer here along these properties. In addition to that, there's going to be this woven wire, I'll call it the, you know, the cattle fence, the woven fence with the barbed wire on top of it because of their agricultural operation there.
Chris, one other thing, because I know it's going to come up tonight, why don't you all go ahead and address the water?
Well, the water, as far as retention?
Yes.
So I got Brian Shirley here from Arnold Consulting and...
Is it fair to say that y'all will contain all the water?
We can't put it on people. And I know the question Commissioner Clark was, will we get water put on us? I think if I understood the question she posed, we certainly hope we don't get water put on us. But whatever water is already flowing on or off this property, we have to take care of.
Correct.
So we can't make a burden on someone else. And you know, over the years, engineers usually tell me that when they engineer these developments, they actually increase the water situation even for their neighbors because they end up retaining some of the water that's not even originating on their property. Now, that's what they tell me. I'm not an engineer, but I do know as a matter of law, we can't create a burden for someone else. And that's why you see these retention areas that are in concept, and then when you build them out, if you go to these subdivisions, you'll see them. They're very readily apparent where these things are built.
Chris, just to clarify something you said, I think I understood the intent, but just want to make sure. When you say increase the water on neighbors, you're not referring to adding the water burden? You're referring to taking away the water burden from the neighbors, correct?
Correct. We can't add water to them.
Okay.
We can't develop the property such that the water runs off this development onto the neighbors. And then we, you know, that's not, that's against the law. And it's again, more importantly, for y'all's purposes, it's against your zoning regulation. When they go out and start to develop this and pull permits, that's when that review process happens, and they make sure through those review officials that the engineering is adequate.
Any other questions for Mr. Davenport?
I just have one more. About that fence, okay, you've got the backyard of people's houses. Then you're going to have landscaping, and then you're going to have this fence. Is there going to be landscaping on the other side of the fence?
The other side of the fence will be the Cheney property.
And that'll be cattle, so it's not going to be anybody...
I think that's what they have on their property, is my understanding.
Okay, well, that's what I'm trying to say. Are you going to put landscaping on both sides to protect that fence, or that's just to keep the cattle off?
Correct. And they already have some form of a fence along that property line.
Right.
But I think the fence that was requested of Mr. Tarter was more substantive, and that's what he's agreed to.
I'm just trying to picture their backyards, what that's going to look like, looking out their back window. They're going to do some landscaping, so you can see the things.
It's the idea. The landscaping there, the shielding's really for the benefit of the lot owners, so they don't see that woven fence. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. In our audience tonight, is there opposition? Can I see with a raised hand? Okay, thank you. Do you all have a, one individual spokesperson for this group? Okay, so if anybody would like to make a comment, we'd ask you to come to the microphone and, just in respect to everybody, it's a three-minute comment, please, sir. Would you state your name and address, please, sir?
Yes, Carl Cheney, 9439 Nashville Road.
Mr. Cheney, you swear to tell the truth?
I do, I do.
Thank you.
It's not the cows I'm worried about getting onto that property, it's people getting onto my property and having a possibility of someone getting hurt.
That's what I was...
Yes, ma'am, and I appreciate that.
That's my fear, like trying to get barbed wire fence in their backyard, kid decides to go over and get their football or something, who's going to get hurt?
I come to you today representing myself, the Cheney family, Chaney's Dairy Barn, and the generations of Chaney's that have taken place on our property. I'm fourth generation. Fifth generation is in the audience. Sixth generation's probably at home watching TV. This is the third time I have come before to, as it relates to the developments in our area, and conveying to you the impact that they have and will have on our property and the future of our family and our businesses. It is still remarkable to me that the rights of those yet to live in an area trump the rights of those that have been there for generations. I am not oblivious to growth. I understand it. I did not fight 31W, they took part of our property. I understand that. We need a bigger road because we've got more cars. We have no say in who, what someone does with their property. However, we do have the right that when those changes affect our property, to speak out. So this is the third time I've done that. We would like for these to be added to the development and in the binding elements. I appreciate and I acknowledge the fence, I really do. But my point is, is we have a manure lagoon, we have equipment, livestock, et cetera, that are incredible dangers to the potential residents behind us. There has to be adequate protection and maintenance of this structure to ensure minimal to no liability on our property. Can you imagine a small child or a group of young children at night trespassing onto our property, drowning in our lagoon, and the lifelong impact that that not only will have on their family, but on ours? We realize that liability is there now, but with increased accessibility, the risk rises. We would like to see, if this does go through, a Kentucky right-to-farm statute to be included in the deeds of every property sold. We would like an acknowledgement that they live boarding an operational dairy farm. Guys, we have to manage the waste of our cattle by spreading manure on our fields, and at many times, the odors that tend to blow the direction of the proposed development, they are not pleasant. Cows have babies. Cows die. We lost our oldest cow this year. She was 17 years old, Mrs. Glimmer. The day-to-day operations of a working dairy farm at times are not in the realm of normalcy or understanding to the general public, whom are so now far removed from the farm. Now, we're looking at four generations removed from the farm. We would like sincere reconsideration of the walking path along 31W and McIlwain Road. This is an incredible danger as traffic flows into our facility on top of the proposed walking path. Can you imagine during the summer, lines of cars coming in off of 31W and a woman with a stroller trying to dodge cars that are trying to enter our business? In addition to this, during harvest, over 80 semi-trucks a day travel down this road hauling crops. I simply do not see this as a good fit for a walking trail. Something else has to be considered. Our property cannot be the thoroughfare for hundreds of individuals wanting to go to the park. We have communicated with the Tarters about this ground over the years. It was once in our family many years ago. Development is not how we want to see it turn out. I have been consistent about this. Mr. Leon, David, and John have been a friend of our family for years, and it still warms my heart when I would see Mr. Leon sit on the back porch of the Dairy Barn and look out over his land. And I have hope and assurance that the communication lines will be open and we can work with them that will affect these proposed changes. We do appreciate it, and we hope at some point in time that maybe that we can sit down and maybe hopefully work out something, but we're also still thinking that we can make a living milking cows too. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Cheney. Is there anyone else in the audience that has a comment? We've heard about the agriculture. Yes, ma'am, your name and address, please?
My name is Amy Smith. I live at 1052 South McIlwain.
Yes, ma'am, you swear to tell the truth, Ms. Smith? Thank you.
I do. I've never done this before, so I'll apologize now. I posed minus questions, so my questions about this were, how would this development enhance and preserve the existing agricultural landscape and scenic rural character along Nash Road and South McIlwain? That was listed in the staff report. I don't know if you've ever been down this road. It's kind of a hidden jewel. There's always bikers, there's joggers, there are people that run. They have 10Ks and 5Ks down this road because it is so pretty. And there's wildlife abundant through this area. If you drop 500-plus houses on less than half an acre, I mean, it's just going to be a sea of homes, and they're, it's not going to enhance the agricultural landscape or the scenic rural character of this area. And it will lose the charm, the people coming to Chaney's. That is a big piece of Chaney's, is that you feel like you're going out to the country to this, to Chaney's Dairy Barn. It's not going to look the same when you come to Chaney's Dairy Barn, it looks like it's in the middle of a subdivision because you have 500 houses. There's no open space. As you can see, all you will see behind Cherry's Dairy Barn, sorry, I'm nervous, is building material. You will see roofs, asphalt, that is in no way consistent with the current landscape that's there now. Another consideration is, and it really hasn't been talked about a huge amount, is the Cheney State Nature Preserve, and I know they're here today too, but these lots are going to be right up against the nature preserve. It is a transient lake, which means it changes constantly, so it's not always, the lake isn't always a set boundary. There are seven endangered species listed when I searched this particular exact lot or tract of land that are known to exist in or around the Cheney Lake State Nature Preserve. And those are just the ones that are listed on the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Site. And I have a list of them, if you'd like to know them, but you can search it yourself too, I can give you the... But I know that Kentucky also has some other species that are on their list that aren't on the national or the federal list. So I don't know, there's no mention of anything that they're going to be able to do to keep that habitat because you drop 500 homes, that's going to severely hurt their habitat. All those, all that wildlife, all the birding, all the plants is going to be affected. This is no lot, will no longer be rural. It will be a subdivision. It will be packed with people and cars and pollution. And then the other question I have...
Miss, we have about, we'll give you about 30 more seconds, okay?
Okay. The only other point I was going to make was, I know he mentioned that it has an overriding public benefit because of all the need for housing out that way. But he also stated, all of the developments that have already been approved with, by the last time I counted, it was almost 850 lots. Many of those, probably, I think it was at least two-thirds of those, have yet to be even developed. So to me, this is premature to know that that need's still going to be there when we have all these lots that have already been approved within a half-mile to mile radius of this particular site, and those haven't even been filled up yet. So 500 lots is way bigger than any of those, and it, to me, seems a little premature to think that we need all those when we haven't, we haven't even developed the ones that are already approved.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
If there's anybody else who has a comment, we've talked about the agriculture, we've talked, Ms. Smith brought about the wildlife and the scenic character of the area, and we've talked about pollution, and we've addressed the preserve. So if anybody has something different, I think we've addressed the water runoff. We're not trying to rush anybody, we're just going through what we've discussed. So if anybody has anything different, we would welcome you to come. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Sunny Carr, and I'm here on behalf of the Office...
Your address, Ms. Carr?
I'm sorry, it's 300 Sour Boulevard, Frankfurt, Kentucky, 40601.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir. I am the executive director of the Office of Kentucky Nature Preserves, and the commissioner to my right had asked earlier if the property owners had been addressed about this issue, and we have not received any correspondence into our office regarding the impact or the development of this property. We do obviously have jurisdiction over the State Nature Preserve. It is a very important resource. I'm going to read a short letter that I'll be happy to submit to the commissioner for record, and there's a couple of items that have been brought up by the developers and others that are very important, and I can make some connections on an ecological basis for this particular property. It has come to our attention that a 263.35-acre property owned by Mr. Leon Tarter joining the Cheney Lake State Nature Preserve is being considered for a change in zoning from agriculture to RS-1A. Mr. Tarter's property forms the entire northern boundary, which, looking on a map, is about 1,800... eighteen hundred linear feet for us of the Chaney Lake State Nature Preserve. Without accounting for the acreage dedicated to water retention or paved road service, the copy that we had from a public member that sent this in to us said that there were five hundred and thirteen proposed residential lots, and those lend themselves to more, you know, in our view of a mid to a high residential density. The Chaney Lake State Nature Preserve is an ecologically sensitive area with federal and state listed, threatening endangered species dependent on this unique natural lake and surrounding landscape. The hydrology of the area creates unique conditions which form this natural lake. Migratory birds, sensitive plants, and aquatic life depend on this rare natural community type. According to City County Planning Commission of Warren County, Kentucky, natural and cultural resources have been identified as important elements to consider in the long-term planning endeavors per the Warren County Bowling Green Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan. In Chapter 3.5, hydrology characteristics, endangered species, and other important natural features are highlighted, and specific objectives and action items were developed to preserve the integrity of the karst features and natural resources of the area. Due to the rare species found nearby, concerns over changes in hydrology and the county's priorities, as set in the comprehensive plan, we believe it is in the best interest of Warren County to delay approval of this change until such a time that the impacts of this development on the karst and water resources found in the area can be better understood. Proceeding without fully understanding this, excuse me, how this development would affect these resources would not be in the best interest of the county's identified goals and objectives. And the reason that we say this, and yes, people have brought up hydrology, but what is important, especially for those of you who live here, you understand very much how water moves in this system. The geology of the area, this lake is naturally formed, and the water, if you look at the levels, that water is driven from the water table. When you have a situation like this, you look at the surrounding landscape, it's agriculture, that water can infiltrate, move through that karst system at leisure. When you have a situation like this, and you have increased impervious surface in a concentrated area, two things are happening. One, that water can't percolate through, so you're not able to remove contaminants and things like they naturally would, and also the flow of that water changes. And the gentleman that presented earlier brought up something that was very important. He said certainly, you know, they don't want to put water on someone else, and they can sometimes have water held up more than will go to surrounding areas. The hydrology of the lake and the ecology of the system depends on water movement. It is a natural lake, it is not man-made. So if they do hold more water on that property, and it's denying that water from being on the preserve, you're going to change microconditions which could change plant and animal communities. And so that's something that we would be very interested in seeing, if the Commission would, you know, spend some time or have folks look at that, because we had about two days from the public to even know that this was going on. So we would have been better prepared, but we had no contact.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate you. So thank you for driving down from Frankfurt tonight.
Sure. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has a comment other than what has been discussed tonight? We don't want to, we want to be fair to everybody, but we want something different. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Monisa Wright. My address is 12410 Nashville Road, Woodburn.
Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, a couple of comments, questions. My husband was the treasurer for the Woodburn Fire Department for thirty years. He retired in December, and he knows firsthand that we are having a terrible time getting enough young volunteers to be firemen now. So with five hundred extra houses here, three hundred over in Jo Neil and Pat Balance's, you know, land across the street and all that others, I am afraid that we are going to be taxing the volunteer fire department too much, and my question is, is there any plan to help that? Okay, the other thing I wanted to say was, when is the widening of Nashville Road going to take place? Because like, if everyone has two cars, there's going to be a thousand coming from this subdivision, there's going to be six hundred coming from across the street there by Mike Buchanan, you know, the Balance Farm one. So that's sixteen hundred cars coming out on a two-lane road. And I, living in Woodburn, I know the traffic snarl that there is at 7:30 because of South Warren High School. So these are the things that I'm a little bit concerned about. And just one more comment, why no green space? All this property, why not put some more green space in there? And maybe that would help with the water percolating on down into our karst topography. You know, that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. I think that, just opinion, we've contacted the Woodburn Fire Department, and I think that's going to be an ongoing issue for all of our volunteer fire departments, but thank you for bringing that up, and thank you for your husband's service all these years. Any other questions or comments from our audience tonight that has not been mentioned? Sir, would you come to the microphone, please, sir? Your name, sir?
Michael Gabbert.
Mr. Gabbert, your address?
1615 South Michael Wayne Road.
Swear to tell the truth?
I swear to tell the truth, this time. She was talking about the flood plain, and there's one area, I've lived out there for fifty years, and there's a spot down there that's about ten acres that floods, and nobody, she said something about the spot. And he said something about the lines running through. Well, that's a TVA line that runs all the way across there, so it will be not, it will not be moved. And if this does go through, we want access to the sewer system.
Is that right?
That's right. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
And our property line, the back of it is our property line, down at the back.
It's the bottom one, south.
Yeah. The bottom down there is us, down at the bottom of the sign.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbert. We can't address the sewer line, but if it's out there, I'm sure it's accessible to you. Mr. Peterson, you want to address that?
Sure. This, there will be sewer extended to this development, so it would be on sewer. I can address the Nashville Road improvements. There was a bid opening a couple of weeks ago to start construction by the State Highway Department, so construction is expected to begin on that later this year, or certainly next year, and of course, it'll take a bit to get constructed. And that will be on the portion from roughly right at the Balance Development that was spoke of tonight, next to Buchanan Park, back up to where it narrows down at McClellan Road. So that will improve that area at South Warren. There is the other section going out from Buchanan Park to Woodburn to the county line that is not yet funded, so that would be in a later phase.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any other comments from anyone in the audience tonight? We appreciate you all being here and your input. Something different, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Your name and address, please, sir?
James Chaney, address 1521 South McIlwain Road. Is the...
Mr. Chaney, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Is the pointer laser pen up here? Is that what this is?
Yes, sir.
There it is. The stall property borders this development. From that point down to this point, there is a mature tree line there, and I would like to know if this was to go through, if the Tartars would agree to not thin that tree line out. It's a nice, big, mature fence row. It's so thick in the summertime, you can't see through it. It makes a very nice buffer. Didn't know if they would be in agreeance to leave all of that alone and not thin it out. And then my other question was, I've heard a lot about the widening of McIlwain Road, widened at twenty feet. Is the widening going to take place from this entrance into the new development to Nashville Road, or is it going to come around farther?
Would be the second one.
Which would be that one right there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Before Mr. Davenport, before you answer that question, is there any other comments in the audience?
Can we possibly get the land map up and show me where that lake that the lady from Frankfurt's talking about? I don't see it up there shown.
Is it right there? That is the Chaney Lake State Nature Preserve.
Oh, down in that flood plain area?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was trying to decide. So that could really impact that. Okay.
Thank you, Zach. All right, I think we've heard, we appreciate all your comments tonight. Mr. Davenport, or Mr. Tartar, the last comment about the tree line?
I can address that, Chair Warren. If you'll go to DPC number ten, it currently reads, "The developer shall take all reasonable steps to preserve all mature and healthy trees existing along the southern property line adjoining Chaney Lake," and I would offer that the addition, this language be added to the end of that sentence, and the property line common with stall. And I would ask Mr. Tartar to come back up. You realize you're still under oath?
Yes.
Okay. Did you hear the revision I made to the Development Plan Condition Number Ten with regard to the property line common with stall?
Correct, yes.
And do you agree to that?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Davenport, one question.
So, Chris, let's go back to Mr. Chaney's comment. He requested a right to farm statute be included. Can you tell us a little bit about that? I think he requested it for a previous property or a previous zoning as well.
He did. Let me first just kind of clarify, we can't, neither, I don't think Mr. Tartar, and I know I can't grant a statute necessarily, but I think what he's referring to is some language in the deed that would put a buyer on notice that the lot is at least in the vicinity of an ongoing agricultural operation. That, I do recall, the Balance Property, that request was made, and that developer agreed to it, as I recall. I believe I'm right about that. Mr. Tartar's happy to do that. I want to be clear with the Commission, though, that, and that came up that night, and I haven't really thought about it since, until I've been sitting here. The only concern I have about that is that these development plan conditions, unless they revert to a plat restriction, which this would not, okay? This development plan condition would be enforced by these folks in front of you. And I don't think that we expect the Commissioners, for a time eternal, or the staff, excuse me, to be pulling deed records to see if that continues in the chain of title. Now, I'm just being frank with you. My client can agree to it, and...
There's no guarantee.
And I'm sure, now, I'm sure that every deed on these lots will have that language in it, and it will then be in the chain of title. But Mr. Chaney's request was really that every deed would always have that in it. And I, I mean, I really don't know if Mr. Tartar could, it would be out of his hands at some point, when twenty years from now, if a real estate agent lists a home that was built, and someone's coming in and buying it, you know, but it would be in the chain of title. So anyone doing a title search, if they went back, would see it.
Well, most of them only go back thirty years anyway, so, I mean, after thirty years, you probably would never catch it.
One thing I would add, I think is some solace here, and I've mentioned this at the night of the Balance hearing, is we do, the idea of a right to farm statute is actually a group of statutes in our legislation, in our codes that provide for that. The one I think is really implicated is KRS 413072. What that statute says is, an agricultural entity cannot be considered a nuisance or a trespass if it predates the development. And I'm not Mr. Chaney's attorney, but if I were this board and I was concerned about what he stated, what I would point you to is that statute. That is a legislative decision that says, you can't claim a trespass, you can't claim a nuisance, when the existing agricultural use was there and you come to it.
So do I understand correctly, Chris, you're stating that the current statute already reads that if Mr. Chaney's farm predated this development, then someone in this development does not have the right to complain or call the dairy farm some sort of nuisance because Mr. Chaney's farm was there prior?
So I'll rephrase it. What I'm saying is, my belief is, they don't have a cognizable claim against him.
Got it.
Does that make sense? Sometimes the clients will ask, can I sue someone? And I'll tell them, that's a wrong question. I go down to the courthouse and file a complaint, you've sued someone. It might be thrown out tomorrow.
Right.
Okay? The question is, does that statute recognize that claim? And what that statute says is, you can't claim nuisance, you can't claim trespass, when you're, you can't come to it, so to speak.
Okay, great.
If I may add to that, real quick, our local zoning ordinance also has pretty much that exact same language in it, parrots that state statute. So what that would do, if a complaint was to come to our office about the farming operation, if you will, we would just let them know that, if it was owed or something like that, that there was nothing, nothing enforceable that we could do there. I think one, one point, and maybe this is part of Mr. Chaney's point, and he may have to clarify, but I think what he's looking for is something on the front end that just notifies, hey, if you buy this property, you're recognizing that you're next to a farming operation.
And being, and Mr. Tartar doesn't object to that. So with that understanding, I will offer a DPC that will do that.
Okay, can we put that on hold just for a second?
Sure.
With the Chair's permission, I'd like to call Mr. Chaney back up and ask him just a couple more questions, if I may.
Sir?
So, Mr. Chaney, you heard that discussion. I am sympathetic, I grew up on a dairy farm, I understand exactly what you're talking about, but if I understand what Mr. Davenport is offering, it's essentially a clarification of the current KRS statute, but in addition, he's offering to, I think, Mr. Davenport put, enter into, or put a DPC in just acknowledging that anyone who buys this home, we're acknowledging that we're buying a home next to a dairy operation. And so, if that's the case, does that, does that do for you what you're looking to do?
I could read the future, I'd tell you. I've got some friends that are in the dairy business, and even though they were there fifty to sixty years, there was a development that came in, and because the people complained so much, that they wound up selling the farm instead of having to deal with it. That's not his responsibility, and I understand that. So it will, it will, it will do, because they did that across the road, so we suspect that hopefully that that will help us moving forward. Again, you know, I'm farming for myself, now I've got my kids, so I'm hoping that our dairy farm, we're not going nowhere, guys, we're hoping to be there in another hundred years.
We hope you are as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, Chris, would you, would you add that DPC, please? Let's add a number, right now we have up to thirteen, is that right? So let's make thirteen fourteen, because that is the DPC that reverts some of this to plat restrictions. And let's add thirteen, and the new thirteen would read, "Developer shall provide notice to any buyer per N-S," so buyer or buyers, "that the development is located in the, I'm going to say adjacent, because some of it is adjacent, adjacent to an existing slash operating dairy farm."
Chris, what about changing it from a dairy farm just to a farm?
Or...
Because it couldn't...
Because it could, it might not be, hopefully, just, just a farming operation. How about that?
Existing slash operating farming operation.
Yeah.
David, can you come up here? Still under oath?
Yes, sir.
Did you hear that new development plan condition number 13?
Yes, sir, I did.
On behalf of your dad, do you agree to that?
I do.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir.
Before they leave the podium, I have, I have a question, and probably David also. And this relates to the barbed wire that's on the fence, and this is from an aesthetic standpoint. Is there something other than barbed wire that could be placed at the top of that? And here's my point. From an aesthetic standpoint, if you have visitors to Chaney's dairy barn, dairy farm, what are the visitors gonna think of the barbed wire? Is it gonna send the wrong message? If you have residents who are buying property into the new development, if approved, does the barbed wire send a bad message from an aesthetic standpoint? Also, from the nature preserve standpoint, does that send a connotative or a bad message from, from their perspective?
I can clarify, I can clarify one point.
Okay.
And that is, the, the fence, the stave fence with the barbed wire would not be adjacent to the conservation area.
Okay, okay.
And with regard to the area common with Chaney, I, I'll let, if David disagrees, he'll tell me, but I think that's really up to Mr. Chaney.
Okay.
Normal farm practice is a 48-inch fence, 60-inch staves with the barbed wire on the top. Just a normal fence like you had on a farm, everybody had on a farm growing up with a barbed wire on top. But if it would look better to have a one board on the top or something like that, it, what, I mean, me and Mr. Chaney can work that out, and I'll
Yeah, I'm just looking at it from, from an aesthetic standpoint.
Sure.
And the other, the other point I'll make, and, and Mr. Chaney would know this a lot better than I do, but that fence will be located on this red line. The actual, when we think of the Chaney's dairy, the commercial operation that we visit to go, when my daughter leaving Buchanan when she wants ice cream, is right here in this purple section.
Okay.
So, and I don't know how far it is. He, he would know. There, and then this, the area in between, I think, is literally where he has cattle. So I don't think it's really so close to what you and I think of the dairy barn.
So this is not a razor wire or?
No, no, no concertina wire.
Okay, okay.
Barbed wire.
Okay, well, I just need clarification.
Yes.
So, so to further clarify there, David, if I may, the primary, I'm gonna state something, I want you to tell me if I'm correct or not. The primary purpose of the barbed wire at the top is to just to keep the cattle from leaning on the fence and trying to pick across the fence. That's the only reason.
At the top of it, you scratch, and you put barbed wire on the top to stop that, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying.
Thank you.
Well, with developments the way they are now, and sort of waiting on the highway to be expanded a little bit, you know, you're, you're probably two years into just the development and the drainage area and all that kind of stuff, and laying out the streets and the lots, and, and by the time you get that done, getting the bidding process, I'm, you're probably talking a minimum of three years with this.
And I would expect it to be in phases.
Yeah.
David, what kind of buffer is gonna be between that line of houses there and the Chaney Lake thing?
Natural buffer that's there now.
Okay, so there's not gonna be anything special to keep people from just going over there to the preserve?
Nothing there now.
There's nothing there now.
That's Commissioner Clark, that's the, the thick, what Zach said, there was the thick tree line to the south property, that's the proper line he was speaking of, and so
That whole thing along there is all gonna be the thick?
We've committed to leaving that tree line in place.
Okay.
If I leave that there, I don't have to plant more, and that looks better because God created it.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport, and so we are, we've concluded our Okay, you got, make it one and a half minutes, okay?
And sorry, like I said, if I had more time to prepare, I'd have been together. One thing that is important for the community to understand is the area that does border that, that nature preserve is in fact closed to the public because it is so sensitive. So your point was very well made, asking about a buffer. Obviously, we like to have movement of wildlife. It's all agriculture around it now, so there's no trespass issues because of the farming nature. But that area is actually close to the public, even though it's remote now. And there are, you know, in the proposed drawings, you have houses that are right up on that line, and you look at those lot sizes, you're just a few feet away from the boundary, and so there could be some potential trespass issues there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, we've heard our, our public hearing tonight, would ask for a motion for the flume amendment.
I make a motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number 202119 flume, based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed flume amendment has met the directive to amend the flume as outlined in LU 114 in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Oh, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
I just wanted to let the neighbors know that we hear all your concerns. I grew up on a big dairy farm, and I hate to see the agriculture disappear like it is, but I think this developer has gone above and beyond what anyone could ask for. It's gonna be large houses, large lots, and I just think he's doing a tremendous job on trying to, to help the neighbors, so regretfully, I'm going to say yes, that it goes through.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion has been approved with opposition, and we would ask for a second motion for the zoning ma, zoning map amendment change.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon a general development plan, docket number 202147 Z County, based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Before we call for that vote, Chair Warren, I just want to remind the commission that this is for the zone change, and so it would just be the four city of Bowling Green employees and the four Warren County appointees that, that vote on this.
Apologize for that.
Your fine.
I apologize, I did not mark that out on my voting sheet, so this will take me just a second. Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
And Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all for being here tonight. Our next item is 202119 flume. Mark and Tracy Thomas have filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a portion of, of a tract of land containing approximately 4.25 acres located at Zero Greenbrier Road, located approximately four tenths of a mile from Woodburn Allen Springs Road, and approximately 1.16 miles from the intersection of Greenbrier Road and Antioch Greenbrier Road from agriculture to rural density. The full 12 members will vote on this, and if the flume amendment is, is passed, they've also filed an application to rezone a portion of, of a tract of land containing approximately 4.25 acres located at Zero Greenbrier Road, located approximately four tenths of a mile from Woodburn Allen Springs Road, and approximately 1.16 miles from the intersection of Greenbrier Road and Antioch Brier Road from Ag to RR Rural Residential with a general development plan. And the eight-member board, the four counties, and the four cities will vote on the, that amendment.
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-app on July 21st for the property you see on your screen outlined in yellow with a existing zoning of Ag or agriculture, existing land use of agriculture as well, and a future land use of agriculture as well. The applicants are proposing to amend the flume for 4.25 acres located at Zero Greenbrier Road from agriculture to rural density residential, and if successful, to rezone the property from agriculture to rural residential or RR in order to subdivide one additional lot from a larger agricultural tract and develop the property with a single family residential use. And again, the applicants are requesting to amend that as it's not consistent with the current agriculture flume. If you'll flip over on the next page, under the future land use map, it's got those categories listed for you. And then LU 1.1.4 of the comprehensive plan outlining the procedures for amending the flume, and the planning commission's approval of the flume amendment should be based on one of the following three criteria you see listed below. The applicants included the narrative below with their application. "The proposed home will be approximately 1,500 to 1,700 square feet with either attached or detached garage that is compatible with existing homes along Greenbrier Road. Proposed home will be constructed with modern construction materials that are compatible with existing homes along Greenbrier Road. Proposed home will be placed on the lot, building setback to complement existing homes along Greenbrier Road." Then if you'll flip on down to your site characteristics review, I won't touch on all of them, I'm happy to touch on any of them you guys want, but I will call out the water adequacy, that the property is served by Warren County water, and does not have adequate fire, or water flow to meet the minimum fire protection requirements. However, the property is exempt from such requirement as only one lot is being proposed and created. You'll flip on to the next page under, to, to wrap that section up, that staff does recognize that the application complies with the majority of the items in the site characteristics review under site design and compatibility. Surrounding density within a quarter mile, the rural dens, excuse me, the residential density ranges from zero to point, zero to 3.04 dwelling units per acre with an average of 0.47 dwelling units per acre and a median density of zero dwelling units per acre. And within a half mile, that density range is the same with an average density of 0.31 dwelling units per acre and a median of 0.02 dwelling units per acre, and the density for the proposed lot is 0.24. Looking on down to surrounding architectural features, for homes fronting Greenbrier Road from Woodburn Allen Springs Road to south of the property at the first part of the S curve, homes range from one to one and a half stories in height with some taller agricultural buildings also present in the vicinity. Home sizes range from 960 square feet to 23, 2,390 square feet with a median of 1,0469 and an average of 1,0571. And all but two homes have an attached or detached garage with half having a two-car attached garage. And in the area, the majority of the homes have a vinyl exterior with the remaining mostly comprised of brick or stone. Building foundations are mainly split-face block with the rest a mix of brick, stone, plain face, and post-in-pier. There is no area-specific review, so looking on down to the general development plan, development plan conditions. Number one, the applicants propose that any primary residence constructed on the property shall contain a minimum of 1,500 square feet of conditioned space. Number two, the development shall be limited to a maximum of one lot. Number three, has to do with ori, building orientation with a front facade facing Greenbrier Road. Number four, the proposed residence will have finished exteriors of vinyl, brick, stone, cement, cement-based siding or engineered wood siding. The foundation shall be comprised of split-face block, brick, or stone. Number five, the proposed residence will be constructed at least 100 feet from the front property line. Number six, proposes there will be no mobile or manufactured homes. Number seven, that any existing mature trees will remain on the property. Number eight has to do with the Barron River Health Department septic approval. And number nine has to do with access to the property being coordinated with Warren County Public Works. Under your Focus 2030 category review, staff identified 14 items, six of which comply, eight of which are up to planning commission determination. The ones that are up to your determination are LU 1.1.1 and 1.1.2, in that the proposal may comply with the flume, if deemed compatible with the surrounding area, that the flume amendment to rural density residential is approved. And if the planning commission determines that the proposal is compatible and complies with 1.1.3, the proposal may comply with LU 2, with the planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. Looking on down to NCR 2.4 and 2.4.1, the planning commission should determine compliance and whether or not the proposed lot will result in increased amount of development pressure on the countryside or preserve and enhance Warren County's rural and agricultural heritage. And the proposal may comply with HN 2.1 and HN 4 if the planning commission determines that the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type, and if the proposed residence is believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. You got your staff review summary below, but if there are no questions on that, we can flip back to page one with the points to consider. The applicants could subdivide five acres from the current parent tract without having to amend the flume or rezone the property, but they are electing to do the, the rezoning in the flume to get their 4.25 acres today. The planning commission should consider if the argument provided by the applicants to amend the flume meets criteria outlined in LU 1.1.4 of the comprehensive plan. If the flume amendment is approved, the proposal would be consistent with the flume and RDR, rural residential category, rural density residential category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and a majority of the site characteristics review criteria with limitations regarding road width and then that fire protection, which they are exempt from, that I mentioned earlier. The proposal meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance, and compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. And that's all I've got for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Zach.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Jones?
So Zach, I think you addressed this in the points to consider, but I just want to make sure. They're, they're only cutting off one lot, so, but they would have to have five acres to, to not have a hearing, is that correct?
Right. If they wanted to do five acres, they could subdivide it just per the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance without having to, to go through a rezoning or a flume amendment.
Got it. And so it looks like that there's an existing residence there, so they're gonna keep the existing residence and cut off one lot? Does that make, am I reading that correctly?
Let me see. I don't know that there is an existing residence, that they're wanting to develop the property with a single-family residence.
Okay. Okay, so it's an adjunct, there's just a neighboring piece of property there.
Yes.
I see what you're saying, okay. In this aerial, let me, let's do it this way. This piece of property is, is shown as if it is currently a, a part of this plat, but is that not the case?
No, I believe that the highlighted portion in yellow is actually part of the property to the north.
Got it. Okay, very good. All right, thank you. Commissioner Graham, any other questions for Zach? Thank you, sir. Is the applicant here? Anything y'all would like to add? Nothing you'd like to add, okay. Is there opposition to this request tonight? All right, thank you. Our first motion will be to, for the flume amendment.
Make the motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number 202119 flume, based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed flume amendment has met the directive to amend the flume as outlined in LU 114 in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Chair Warren?
Yes ma'am. Our second motion will be for the zoning, uh, map amendment, and this will be voted on by our four county commissioners and our four Bowling Green city commissioners.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with a condition upon a general development plan, docket number 202151Z County, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes ma'am. The motion approved, thank you to Thomases. Our next item tonight is Don and Joey Ritchie and the Intermodal Transportation Authority have filed an application for a future land use map amendment on tracts of land containing approximately 232 acres located Zero Freeport Road located approximately eight tenths of mile from Louisville Road and approximately 1.58 miles from Oakland Road from agricultural to institutional governmental to industrial. The full 12 members will be, uh, voting on this future land use amendment.
Thank you Chair Warren.
Rachel.
We had a pre-application conference on August 3rd for the property, property you just described, uh, currently has frontage on Freeport Road, contains approximately 232 acres. The current zoning of the properties are agriculture, the current use is also agriculture, and the future land use designation currently is agriculture and institutional and governmental. The first application before you this evening is to amend that future land use map to industrial, and if that is approved, then the applicants would like to rezone the property to heavy industrial in order to expand the existing trans park. Jump to the concept plan here. Turn to page two, and we'll look at the future land use map, specifically LU 1.1.4, which outlines the criteria to amend the future land use map. I think Zach referenced this in the previous two applications this evening, and so I won't go through that in detail, but the applicants did submit a brief narrative to address the criteria in LU 1.1.4. That is listed about three-quarters of the way down page two for your reference. The planning commission should consider if this information provided by the applicant addresses the criteria in LU 1.1.4 in order to amend the future land use map. Looking at the site characteristics review, lot sizes and setbacks will adhere to the minimum requirements in the heavy industrial zone as outlined in the zoning ordinance. Additionally, the applicants agreed in their development plan conditions that no principal building shall be located within 150 feet of a residential use, and no accessory building shall be located within, within 100 feet of a residential use. Under transportation infrastructure, uh, as I mentioned, the properties currently have frontage on Freeport Road, however, uh, there is a proposed extension of production avenue shown on this concept. It's not yet constructed, but that's how the properties would be provided with access. Looking at prime farmland, uh, the majority of this development does contain soil types designated as prime farmland. Jumping down to the site design and compatibility review, we'll look at proposed open space. The overall development, uh, according to the development plan conditions that are proposed, shall contain at least 20% green space. Each lot individually would be required to provide at least 10% open space. On page four, looking at the connectivity, uh, as you see, there is a proposed stub street that's, uh, shown on this concept to the east. And then, under traffic impact study, that comes from section 314 of the ordinance, a traffic impact study was not required by our transportation agencies, and we'll get to some of those, uh, specific, uh, agreements and development plan condition six here in just a second. Looking at the development plan conditions that are proposed, number one, outlines permitted uses, two, screening of loading docks in outside areas, three addresses signage, four, looks at emissions, five, looks at green space parking, or, sorry, parking setbacks and preservation of existing trees. Number six, uh, looks at the access and roadway improvements, and I will read through this really quick. It says that ingress and egress to the property will be over new internal streets to be constructed by the property owner. The initial point of ingress and egress shall be from an extension of production avenue. New internal streets will be designed to accommodate heavy vehicles and meet the standards of an industrial park roadway. The property owner will make roadway improvements as required by the public works department of the city of Bowling Green, the public works department of Warren County, and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet can- to connect new internal streets with external roads. In the event that vehicular access is provided to Freeport Road, the property owner will work with the applicable transportation agency to install any necessary upgrades or improvements to such roadway as required by the applicable transportation agency. Jumping to number seven, that looks at prohibited uses, eight addresses building setbacks adjacent to a residential use, nine, uh, addresses environmental considerations, 10 looks at roadways and drainage, and 11 looks at stormwater considerations. Jumping down to the focus 2030 category review, the staff evaluated 14 items. We found eight of those items to be in compliance, and there are six items that the planning commission should evaluate for compliance, the first being LU 1.1.1 and 1.1.2, which look at the future land use map, LU 1.1.3, which looks at compatibility. On page six, LU 2, which looks at quality of development and character of the area, and then jumping down to NCR 2.4 and 241, which include considerations for premature development and agricultural heritage. Uh, I will mention, I forgot to mention at least, uh, when I read through the development plan conditions, those are generally the same as the development plan conditions and binding elements from the previous sections of the trans park, with a few minor, uh, changes that are specific to this property or the development that's before you this evening, but in general, they are identical to what's already been adopted for the existing trans park. Jumping back to the points to consider, on page one, we'll wrap up with those. The planning commission should consider if the argument provided by the applicants to amend the future land use map meets the criteria outlined in LU 1.1.4, and if the flume amendment is approved, the proposal would be consistent with the future land use map and industrial category. Second, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And last, compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. That is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Miss, is there any, uh, questions for Ms. Hurt? All right, thank you Rachel.
Thank you.
Uh, is the applicant here and anything they would like to add?
Good evening, my name's Gaines Penn. My business address is 1101 College Street, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
Tell the truth?
I'll try, yes, thank you. I'm here on behalf of the ITA, the applicant. We also have Mr. Ritchie in the rear of the room, who's the owner. Uh, the ITA has this land under option, um, and as Ms. Hurt did her normal excellent job on the report, I don't have hardly anything to add other than to emphasize what she said is that is this is an extension of the trans park, which is a state-of-the-art facility. It's the envy of everybody else in the state, and we've done a good job making it, developing it, putting it in all the infrastruc- infrastructure, and this is just going to be the continuation of that good work. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Penn?
I don't have any questions, I have a comment. I'd like to congratulate, uh, Ron Bunch and his board and staff for all the great work that they provide in bringing jobs to Bowling Green, Warren County, they're to be commended for that.
All set.
And I'm sure this new site, if approved, will, uh, will provide the same type of results.
Thank you.
I just have one thing to say, this was the first meeting that I did in 2003 when I went to work for the planning commission. I spent three days at this, and Wayne Priest should have been here tonight to say no less than 35 things were completed in order to do this.
Yeah, come a long way since that, that original hearing, I do believe, and, uh, I think, uh, the, the people who've, uh, the leadership and the communities, you know, made this thing come to fruition and, uh, it's really become a class act out there. So, I think we, as a whole of this body needs to, you know, we thank you for your support of this project.
Penn, we have a motion, oh, is there any opposition, excuse me? Okay, we have a motion to, uh, for the, uh, flume amendment.
Make a motion to approve the proposed future land use, uh, map amendment, docket number 202120 flume, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed flume amendment has met the criteria to amend the flume as outlined in LU 1.1.4 in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Chair, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gay?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes ma'am. Motion passed, our next motion will be for the zoning map amendment, and this will be voted on by, uh, the four city commissioners and the four county commissioners.
Make a motion to, to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with a condition upon the general development plan, docket number 202154Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner, uh, Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes ma'am, the motion approved, thank you all for your time tonight. Our last item tonight, uh, is AV Realty. We're going into executive session in a little bit. We will have executive session after this, um, after this, uh, item, last item. AV Realty LLC has filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing approximately seven tenths of an acre located Zero Beeler Avenue located approximately three tenths, three tenths of a mile from West Sixth Street and approximately two tenths of a mile from Smith Grove, Scottsville Road from highway business to RS1, single-family residential with a general development plan. The five members that will be voting on this, uh, item tonight are the four from the county, Drain, Graham, Starks, and Volker, and then one from Smith Grove, Ms. Ritchie.
Thank you Chair Warren. We had a pre-application conference on July 20th for the three parcels you see on Beeler Avenue. They are currently zoned highway business, and currently the resi- uh, the residential uses that are proposed are prohibited in highway business under the zoning ordinance, which is what has warranted the zone change request that's before you this evening to RS1D. The future land use map for the property is actually a special designated future land use map. It's from the Smith Grove, uh, future land use map, and that designation is single-family residential. Looking at the layout, lot sizes, and setbacks on page two, this is the proposed lot layout with, uh, generic footprints of homes shown for reference. Looking at water adequacy, the properties are served by Warren County water, and if approved, adequate water will have to be, have to be provided before a building permit can be issued for the proposed homes. Looking at natural features, uh, jump back to the aerial here, there are a few mature trees located within a likely future building envelope or development area. Under surrounding density, if I go back to the land use map, we'll look at that. Um, in the area, surrounding density for already developed properties ranges from 0.40 to 4.79 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density is 4.22 dwelling units per acre. Under building materials review, the majority of homes along Beeler Avenue have a vinyl exterior with a few homes also with brick exterior. The majority of homes have either an attached carport or detached garage with a couple of homes having an attached garage. Building foundations are a mixture of plain face blocks, split face blocks, stone, brick, and poured concrete. Looking at the area-specific policy review, this property is within the boundary of the Smith Grove focal point plan. So we looked at SG1, which states that the future land use map should guide all zoning decisions, and the future land use designation, as I mentioned before, is single-family residential, and the proposal does comply with that future land use category. And then SG2 looks, uh, at infill development, and it states that infill development should reflect the character of the neighborhood with regard to size, scale, setbacks, and architecture. The applicant has agreed to a minimum home size of 1,300 square feet, which is between the mid- the median and average home size for homes along Beeler Avenue. The maximum building height, minimum front yard setback, and minimum rear yard setback for the proposed RS1D zone are identical to the RS1A standards, which if we look at the zoning map, is what the surrounding area is zoned. And then the side yard setback in the proposed zoning district is five feet compared to the 10-foot side setback in RS1A. However, several of the existing homes along Beeler Avenue are legal non-conforming and encroach into the required 10-foot side yard setback as they currently exist. The proposal generally complies with the policy regarding size, scale, and setbacks. The planning commission should determine if the proposal complies with the portion of the policy regarding architecture. Looking at the development plan conditions, there are nine. Number one sets the development to a maximum of three lots. Number two looks at minimum home size, three requires a two-car garage, four addresses building materials, five foundation materials, six requires that a minimum of one tree be planted per lot in conjunction with the construction of any new residents, seven addresses access to the property, eight looks at sinkholes, and nine addresses building orientation. Looking at the focus 2030 category review on page four, we evaluated 15 items and determined that five of those items are in compliance. 10 of those items, the planning commission should evaluate for compliance, the first of those being LU 1.1.3, which looks at compatibility, next LU 2, which looks at quality and character of development, next LU 214 PR 1.7 and NCR 1.1.6, which addresses, uh, they address tree preservation, next LU 252, which looks at infill development, next jumping down to LU 29, which looks at the character of the Smith Grove community, next HN 1.3, which looks at the impact of the proposed development on the existing neighborhood, and then last HN, or sorry, HN 2.1 and HN 4, which addresses location and suitability and housing options. Uh, and again, uh, there are three existing single-family lots, uh, those have existed actually since the early 1900s when they were recorded in plat book one. And so, again, like I'd stated earlier, the highway business zoning designation would currently not allow the construction of single-family residences by the zoning ordinance. So the applicants are requesting to downzone the properties to RS1D in order to construct three homes on each of the properties. Wrap up with our points to consider on page one, the proposal is consistent with the future land use map. The proposal complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria with the exceptions noted regarding water availability and tree preservation. Third, the proposed development complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. And last, the planning commission should determine if the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. That is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, Graham, Starks, Volker, or Ritchie, any, uh, questions of Ms. Hurt?
Rachel, are the DPCs that you're proposing pretty compatible with the area?
In my professional opinion, based on what we researched, yes, as far as home size, materials, building orientation.
That's what I'm looking for. Okay, very good, thank you.
Comments or questions? Is the applicant here, anything you all would like to add?
I would like to add.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there any opposition to this request? Yes, sir. Would you please come to the microphone?
Excuse me, my name is Milton Holder. I live at 358 End of Rainbow Lane, McDaniel's, Kentucky.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you.
Ma'am, could you put that aerial back up, please? Okay, thank you. The property, I ain't very good at this stuff, but my wife and I own the property- the property directly in front of this proposed development. The only issue I have, I have no opposition to the three houses that's going to face Beal Street, but I don't know what 4.22 houses look like. I know what three looks like, but not 4.22. And the day that we received this letter, I don't know who this head daddy rabbit of this is, but they dumped rock on that 15-foot easement between Kenneth Low and my wife and I's property, and they're already encroaching on our property just by eyeballing, I must say, two to three foot. I can't get it surveyed until November. I contacted two engineering firms, and they won't be able to do it until November. Like I said, I have no opposition to the one facing Beal, but I guess my question is, is he going to build houses to the rear facing the easement?
Okay, I think I can try and address most of those questions. So, the easement that he is referencing, if we're looking at the aerial, it's actually unimproved public right-of-way. And I actually talked with Josh Moore, our Public Works Director, because we had been made aware of the rock that's been put down, and that was with the consent of the City of Smith Grove. So, we did verify that the City of Smith Grove approved the rock to be put down in their right-of-way for access to these lots. Now, by ordinance, and I think the, the 4.22 is just the calculated density based on the land area and the number of homes that are proposed, so it doesn't really relate to the number of homes. It's just the density of the development that's proposed. So, they're only permitted, if this were to be approved, they're only permitted to build three homes. They wouldn't be permitted to build more than one home per lot, and they couldn't be further subdivided off the alley.
That was our fear, because I've seen how they done some of the construction in our area, and I was afraid he'd come and build three more houses next to the easement. But I do have a need, I do have an issue with whoever's doing this project as far as encroaching on our property.
Yes, sir. I'm not sure who put the rock down. That may be a question for the applicant.
I'm not the applicant. Jase Caldwell, Van Meter and Slavy Engineering, 1015 Shive Lane.
For tell the truth, Jase.
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to survey your property for you. The guys actually already went down there, so if that was something that you wanted done, here's my card. I'd be happy to mark your corners. We surveyed from there all the way to the back of the cemetery right there, so we'd be happy to take care of the issue with the 15-foot alley, making sure there's no encroachments.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
I'm the applicant. I have nothing to add, once again.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would call for a motion for the zoning map amendment?
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with condition upon the general development plan, docket number 202150ZSG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the, with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Mr. Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
And Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion is approved, and we'll go to the Smith Grove City Commission. Thank you all for your time tonight. Is there any other new business tonight? No new business. We have two, two items tonight. Focus 2030 comprehensive plan update, Ben?
Yes, so I just mentioned real quick and be brief, we are starting to think about how we're going to approach really an in-depth review of the comprehensive plan and see if that leads to any changes. It's 2022 is our five-year update period as required by law. We are going to look to have at least 10 opportunities for public input. We're basically going to go over, go through every chapter and at least review what it says, and review the goals and objectives, and see where that takes us. So, you all may start seeing, as well the public, start seeing some of that information start to be disseminated. We're going to have to be creative in how we approach that with, you know, the challenging times we live in with coronavirus. So, we'll probably do a series of recorded videos, presentations, and then do some discussion panels and some hybrid online public input. So, just wanted to let you all know that was coming up. The only other thing I have real quick is we are having issues with the post office getting packets out, not just with the Planning Commission, but with all of our boards. I think hopefully we've got that worked out with the post office. It is going to cost us a little bit more money, but it will be able to stay within budget and believe we can get our packet mail times closer to three days instead of the six, seven, eight it's taken, taken now. We had a, had another board where three members packets never even showed up. So, we're going to have to make changes, obviously, so we can do that. So, we think we, we think we've got a fix for that. We'll give it a try and see what happens. And then the last item, I do need to request executive session due to a personnel matter. I'm hoping to get a vote to hire someone. So, with that, I would request a motion to go into executive session and do, again, hopefully expect a vote coming out of that, but I expect it to be pretty brief.
Motion to, for the Planning Commission to go into executive session regarding a personnel matter?
Ma'am.
Second.
So, we're now adjourned in to, let me stop that piece there, to the executive session.
We need to take a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Let me turn that back on. I jumped the gun. Thank you.
Just following your lead.
Don't do that. Do it your try.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we got a, we got a call roll, and then we'll turn the cameras on. I know, I'm trying.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Now I'll make the motion, and we give Ben the latitude.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Call the roll, Christian.
Commissioner Volker, I know you're excited.
Yes, ma'am.
But, you know, your, your name is called first, so to, to exit executive session. Commissioner Volker. Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
You're up, Christian. Give, give it a try, Christian. Come on. Lean up the microphone, give it a try.
Motion to authorize executive director to negotiate an offer for a planner position up to the adopted salary range and consistent with all hiring policies.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Ma'am. Motion passed. Thank you, Ben. Is there any other items for tonight? If not, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you all for staying.
What are you thinking, Rick, there?